Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, trustee Bosino.
Here.
Trustee Prisminsky.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, and Supervisor Dunn.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Now we have approval of the agenda items with any corrections or additions or deletions. Anyone have any corrections or deletions to the agenda or add-ons perhaps?
Madam Supervisor, we have a request for a proposed add-on under consent agenda items 6B. It will be request for family and medical leave of absence for employee 2315. Also, you will see on the agenda that there was a proposed add-on item number 23 that will not be proposed at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I don't know if this is the proper time to ask this question, but because item, what, item number 23 was taken off, can we ask, that we speak about that and to see if maybe we can have, I could ask a motion to maybe discuss that issue and maybe we can hire, look into maybe getting a headhunter to start looking into getting a planning position? I'm very disappointed that that didn't go through.
We're all disappointed. We have been talking internally about it and probably going to write an RFP for a consulting firm.
Okay.
Anyone else? I believe there was some unfinished business with the invoice that was taken off the agenda. Has that been, I know it hasn't been put on, but are we going to put it back on?
At this time, the motion that we had at the last meeting was to allow board members to review the bill. So if all board members at this time have had the opportunity to review it, you're more than welcome to add it on.
Is everyone seen the invoice now?
I'll make that a form of a motion, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Prisminsky.
What are we voting on? What's a motion to add?
Yeah, actually, if it's just a proposed add-on, that's all you're asking to do when we approve the agenda as amended, it will be included in that.
Okay.
Okay, so Madam Chair, to what trustee Smith had proposed, is there any reason where we can't add a agenda item to discuss hiring a headhunter to pursue a planning director employment?
You can suggest it, and then we would accept the agenda as amended to include that as part of an add-on so the board should, if the board...
In the spirit of what trustee Smith had proposed, I would like to add that to the agenda to discuss, so I guess, would that be the new item, 23?
Sure, it can be 23.
To discuss, to discuss hiring a headhunter to pursue the employment of a planning director.
Question on that motion, Madam Chair. I think the chair just said that internally they are looking to a consulting firm to do that. So I don't know whether or not, just making you aware of that.
So we can't add agenda items? I think you just, no, I think we can add an agenda item to discuss that 100%?
Fine.
Fine, thank you.
So the proposed add-on, so we're all on the same page, is still 6B under consent agenda items. There's a request for now, a proposed add-on for discussion to hire a headhunter for the planning director position and also to add the invoice that was removed from the previous bill run back onto the approval of bills. Everybody all set?
Okay.
Okay. So is there a mo...
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Smith, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Thank you. We will now move on to approval of the bills. As usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with the bill runs, both of them, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Now we have the approval of the previous meeting minutes from September 11th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Hearing none, I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 11th, 2019.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the minutes from 9/11. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And then we have the approval of the closed session minutes from the same day. Are there any motions in this regard?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from September 11th, 2019.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the closed session minutes from September 11th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so now.
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Posey. Seconded by Mr. Bosino to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Public comments, these are for agenda items only. If you wish to speak to the board on an agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Jim, July, item 11. As Chairman of the Ethics Committee, I wanted to add my input for this item. On September 12th, our committee met again with some board members and employees to finalize this ordinance. I feel it was very productive. Some modifications were made as well as correcting some formatting issues. Some board members also brought up the fact that they would like to see the procedures for this ordinance prior to any vote on it, which I totally agree with. I think having the procedures in place with the ordinance would facilitate the process of appointing the permanent members of the Ethics Board so that they know what is expected of them. Our committee has submitted our version of these procedures as well as the bylaws and various miscellaneous forms that would go with the ordinance. Ms. Goodhue has also submitted another version of the procedures for consideration. Whichever version of the procedures the Board of Trustees decides to use, it's obvious that more time will be needed to finalize that part of the process. I believe Ms. Goodhue will be on vacation next board meeting, and I think it's important that all the board members have the opportunity to vote on this ordinance, especially those that have been actively involved in this process. Excuse me. I personally have a problem with the vote being held either the first or second meeting in October, so long as it's completed by then. There should be plenty of time to finalize everything prior to that vote and to allow everyone to view the final product. But I want to make it clear that it's the board's decision, obviously, to make regarding when to vote on it, not the committee. Some may be disappointed it wasn't done tonight, but we all want to get this done right, and with a few extra weeks, it will be. I look forward to a vote on this next month. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Kathy Western, and I'd like to speak to items 16 and 17. First, regarding the appointment of the new deputy supervisor. It has been vacant for nearly a year, but sometimes the search for people to replace key positions can take a long time, such as we are learning with the positions such as the planner and the deputy supervisor. The previous deputy supervisor first became associated with the township by being an election worker. Many of the township personnel and residents got to know her excellent work ethic as a result of her work as a chair on election days. She had a bachelor's degree in industrial management, a certification in geospatial information systems, and was a master citizen planner through the Michigan State University program. If memory serves me, so impressive was her work on elections that our former clerk, the late Michael Kayes, recommended her to Janet Dunn to be her confidential assistant, and that became the first full-time position she held with our township. As most of you know, I am on the Macomb County Older Adult Advisory Committee, representing most of Macomb Township as appointed by our Commissioner, Leandro Lett. It was in this capacity that I had my first dealings with the former deputy supervisor as she was responsible for managing resident-to-township relations, and she had a personal interest in services to seniors. She sought me out to collaborate with her on the survey she did of Macomb Township's seniors, part of the requirement for completing her master's degree in public administration. She was the township liaison to the Older Adult Advisory Committee as part of the Communities for a Lifetime Program. After years as the confidential assistant and shortly after she completed her graduate degree, she was appointed by Supervisor Dunn to be the deputy supervisor. With that promotion came her maintaining office hours for residents before each of these board meetings and also being the FOIA coordinator. In those roles, we continued to have frequent contact. We both learned to navigate the bumpy road of FOIAs. She always seemed able to fulfill nearly all FOIAs on time and without charge. Ask me how I know. I've been known to say talent attracts talent, but sometimes that talent is stolen from you. Our deputy supervisor went on to become the township manager for another municipality. But we look forward to this position being filled again and hearing tonight about the qualifications of the new deputy supervisor and how she will be interacting with township residents. Now, I see I am running out of time to address item number 17, so if you will indulge me, I will just say very quickly, when you get to item 17, we'd be interested in hearing the status of the grant application, if available, and also how the township is on the hook for the entire purchase price regardless of the success or failure of that grant application, because a lot of us still don't understand that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. We will move on now to a presentation from Ms. Dawn Lund, who will speak to us about water and sewer rates for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Dawn Lund. I'm Vice President of Utility Financial Solutions, and I'm here tonight to review the results of a financial projection update for your water and sewer fund. If you recall, a year ago, 2018, our firm performed a detailed cost-to-service study. A cost-to-service study, just real briefly, I'll describe what the two differences between the two studies. Detailed cost-to-service study looks at the revenue requirements, which simply means what kind of revenues do you need from your customers, and it allocates those revenue requirements according to certain cost drivers. And it gives us the perfect, quote-unquote, "perfect rate structure you should be charging your customers." What should we be charging our customers on a fixed cost basis through the customer charge? And what should we be charging our customers on a variable basis, through the usage or the thousand-gallon charge? So a cost-to-service study is a very detailed analysis that should be done about every three to five years, and it gives you the rate structure, the proper rate structure to be charging your customers. A financial projection study should be done yearly, usually with the budget process, and the reason we want that looked at yearly is because obviously your costs are continuing to change, and specifically, your capital improvement program and your cost to treat your water and sewer changed significantly, and we need to ensure that we're recouping those costs appropriately from our customers. So that leads us to tonight. I actually updated the water and sewer financial projection this year. Two significant changes were the increase that you've received from Great Lakes Water Authority and a significant change in your capital improvement program. I'm just going to start right through the presentation, a little bit about our firm, first of all. Again, I'm Vice President of Utility Financial Solutions. Our firm provides cost-to-service studies, financial projections, and rate designs for utilities across the country, Guam, the Caribbean, and Canada. And I'm also the instructor for cost-to-service and financial planning for APPA and a requested speaker on these types of subjects. So the services we provided for the township are an update to the financial projection for water and sewer. You actually currently combine your funds, but for rate-setting purposes, I separate costs and I look at them independently, and then I'm going to show you a projection combined as well, since that's how you're used to seeing it. But keep in mind, these are enterprise funds. Each of the funds should be able to recoup its own expenses, capital, debt service, and those types of expenses to keep the system financially healthy, to provide service to your customers. I'm going to review three financial key targets that we talked about last year, but I'll go through them briefly. The three key targets I'm going to talk about today are debt coverage ratio, minimum cash reserves, and operating income. These three targets actually work together to help provide a look at your financial picture today and where you're moving into the future. And these three key targets work together to determine what's the appropriate rate track or rate increases projected for your systems. I'm going to talk about each of these independently as I go through the table on page six here. I'm going to start with the water department. The table that you're looking at is a very highly summarized table. There's about 50 sheets that go, the detail behind this, it rolls up into the summary. It's actually a pretty powerful summary to tell you, looking at three key targets, how we can put in some, put rate changes in and how it affects the key targets and keeps the system financially healthy in the long term. The three key targets that I'm going to talk about again are operating income. It's the middle column on that table. Right next to that column is the operating cash balance. I'm going to talk about the minimum cash balance. And then the last column to the far right is the debt coverage ratio. The operating income column, the middle column, is simply, that is the cost-to-serve revenue requirement target. If we're fully funding this target, we are fully funding everything we should be funding in the system, our O&amp;M expenses, our capital replacement, our depreciation for our capital replacement. So in the ideal world, we would perfectly fund that target every year. The column next to that is the minimum cash balance that I would like the utility to hold. It's based on a specific formula to determine the minimum. I want you to be something above the minimum. Cash will increase and decrease mainly with your capital improvement program. When you're not, when you're not, when you're in a period of not very significant spending, your cash will grow. And then, of course, your cash grows, and about the time it's growing at a healthy level, you'll see aggressive spending, spending that down. It's just prudent financial planning to have an adequate cash balance to be able to replace capital in the future. The last column, you'll see that NA is there, simply you do not have debt in the water department. But debt coverage ratio is simply a measurement of debt affordability. I look at, do you cash flow enough from operations in that year to pay your debt service payment? And that will become very important when we talk about sewer in a couple of pages. So what this financial projection is showing you is if you look at the second column to the left, I have not put any rate changes in that column, and you can see that operating income turns to a loss in 2022. Cash spends down negative in 2023. And obviously, this is showing that we can't move forward in a healthy manner by not having some sort of rate increase. One of the biggest things that's influencing this table is currently this year, you got a 12.8% rate increase from Great Lakes Water Authority. That simply means the water that's been providing to you, that you pass on to your customers, you had a 12.8% rate increase in that cost. So that's one of the big influences of this table, turning those operating income to loss and spending that cash down, as well as the capital improvement program. Before I turn to the next slides, do you guys have any questions on this table and what it's showing you? This is single, this is looking at the water department independently compared to three key targets. And I'm actually, in a couple of slides, going to put a plan together to show you how to turn those around. But before I do that, do you have any questions on that table?
Madam Chair, the only question I have, Dawn, that 12 point, you said 12.3 or 12.8%?
12.8%.
Is that all the communities in our region? Got that, got that across the board?
You specifically, I don't want to speak for your system, but what I believe happened is you renegotiated your contract, and you specifically got a 12.8. Most of the other communities that I have worked with did not see that type of increase. But this is the first year of your new negotiated contract. Typically, what happens, I'm not saying this is going to happen specifically to you, but those rate increases level out. Did I characterize that correctly?
This is directly related to the outdoor irrigation system issue that I had mentioned last year when I brought the contract to the board. We had, I think I had mentioned at that point that we thought we were going to get a double-digit increase, and it ended up being 12.8. But this is why we've been pushing so hard to get the outdoor irrigation under control so that the next time we renegotiate that contract, we can pull those numbers back down to where they really should be.
So Jim, what do you think other communities are doing to keep that outdoor irrigation down that we're not?
Some have gone to storage. Others don't have the same issue that we do. We're more of an outlier in that most of our customers have some sort of outdoor irrigation. If you go to the inner-ring communities, Detroit, they don't irrigate. Their grass turns brown in the summertime, and it comes back, so they don't have that much of an issue. Their issue tends to be their big customers, the General Motors plants, Ford plants, Chrysler plants, that draw a lot of water, and when they're drawing water. And, you know, working with those customers to, you know, maybe they're providing storage or they're watching when, when they're drawing water into their system in those big, you know, plants.
So is there somewhere where I could go to find a comparison to communities comparable to us, like Shelby or Chesterfield or Washington, the growing communities who do have underground systems, to see what their rates are compared to us?
Great Lakes Water Authority publishes rates for all of their customers, yes.
Okay. It'd be nice to have that, so.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Pantiflin, from the last presentation, there was a graph that was provided to all of us that, just to reiterate, that showed the effect of our irrigation systems and the water consumption that we had during peak hours. So that, that's key. So it was the water consumption that Macomb Township alone had during the peak, peak hours. We saw the potential problem for increasing our weights, rates due to this, which is why we launched a whole nother campaign on enforcing the water ordinances. But that graph did indicate that we were drawing a considerable amount of water during the peak hours. Am I correct?
That's correct. Most customers, and this is not just in this region, but throughout the country, water usage is going down. But expenses don't, aren't going down. They're either staying steady or going up. So, you know, utility has to adjust accordingly to provide that, that same service. More water-efficient fixtures in houses, you know, toilets and showers and so on contribute to that. We're building houses. We're building 500 houses a year, so we're gaining customers who then irrigate. And, you know, we could, if we could get control of this, I think we'd see a much better projection in our water rate from the Great Lakes Water Authority. This doesn't have anything to do with the sanitary side, but on the, on the water side, it is important.
Could you just potential, or could you just possibly reiterate all the things that, and I'll help you with that, because I came up with some of the ideas too. And we are actively trying to inform residents, and we've just adopted an ordinance that now will do a citation for people that aren't following the ordinances, because we, we are doing our due diligence. I'm a taxpayer as well, and I want our, I don't want our water rates to increase. So we're, we are actively trying as a town, as the township, to get that consumption down during those peak hours so that we're not in this position again. And we've put up signs at our concerts. We did flyers on the doors. We've put it on our websites. We've put it on the TV channel.
On the water bill.
It's on the water bill. So we are actively trying to continue to inform, it's in a welcome packet for new homeowners, the information. So we're actively trying to continue to inform residents and to keep them in the loop so that we can avoid this.
It's not about water conservation, it's about saving money, is the bottom line. We all save if we can get control of this.
Correct.
And on that point, do we have different parts of the township where we know they're at? I'm a teacher, I'm off in the summer. I'm off June, July, August. When I walk around my neighborhood, when I jog, when I ride my bike, I don't see an abuse of this water ordinance, although I see some residents online saying some of my neighbors are just completely watering. Do we know which regions are? Because in my neighborhood, and it's a small portion of Macomb Township, I don't see homeowners watering during the day. I just, in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Wangland could show...
I shouldn't say I don't see any. I just don't see like every neighbor, I mean, 5% maybe?
Well, it doesn't take everybody. It just takes enough that it raises up that, that peak hour, which is what the clerk alluded to. That's the, one of the major drivers for us, is that peak hour. It's not the maximum day, it's the, it's the peak hour. And I'm sure Mr. Wangland could show you graphs of, you know, a typical winter or early spring day as to what we're using, and then show you, you know, real hot summer day. And the amount of water that we use is, it's an incredible amount of water, and that's because people are using water outside. It's not, they're running their washer, they're not, it's not the shower, it's, it's outdoor irrigation, as well as other things. You know, people wash their car and whatnot in the summertime. So, you know, what we've tried to do in structuring the ordinance is to, you know, put enough in there that, that everybody understands that there are certain hours that no matter what you're doing outside, you want to avoid, that early morning, you know, 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., when everybody's getting up and going to work, and they're taking a shower and they're starting the dishwasher before they leave, or starting the washing machine before they leave, you know, don't turn irrigation system on at that point and let it run. It's, it's just going to drive this, this cost up, and that's what, and that's what we're seeing here. When, when we had the economic downturn, it was going in the other direction. But obviously, we're, you know, things are much better now, and people can afford to water. And it's okay to water, as long as we're watering at the right time.
Right. I get all that in concept. I would just like to see numbers compared to, again, maybe we had graphs last year and maybe it's on, but I would like something provided to us compared to other communities because, you know, the comment was just made that, because I asked a question, that our community was getting probably charged a little more than others. And again, there's other communities with development with great lawns. When I drive around in some Macomb Township communities, including my neighborhood, no offense to my neighbors, their lawns were dead this summer. I didn't see an overamount of watering this summer. I, I saw dead lawns. I didn't see lawns that, you know, that a 12.8 increase was warranted.
Any other questions before we move on? Very well, continue, please.
Yep, one thing I want to correct is I didn't say that Macomb was getting charged more than others. I said the rate increase this year was more than what I've seen. So real quickly, we'll go through the next three pages. I've already talked about them. The debt coverage ratio is a measurement of debt affordability. Again, I look at that. The next page is the minimum, oops, sorry about that. The minimum cash reserve, again, that's a minimum. I want cash to be something above this. I look at four risk...
I look at four risk areas to the utility. And I put a risk assessment on the, the minimum amount of cash that I believe each utility should hold. Again, cash will hopefully be something above this amount. This is a cash critical amount for these things such as being able to pay your O and M expenses, being able to pay for main breaks or some other equipment failure or emergency, being able to pay your debt service payment, and of course, being prepared for your capital improvement program. So it's a very specific formula that defines the minimum. I want you to be something above the minimum. Operating income. Operating income is simply a, a formula that determines what the appropriate amount of operating income the system should have if the system is being fully funded. We're not always, in a perfect world, you know, we're not always charging exactly our operating income, but we're trying to work towards it or at least keep it to healthy levels. The operating income that the system return on the formula is a 3.5% in general. Utilities across the country for municipal utilities have about a 4% to 7% rate of return. So you're on the lower end of that. Again, if we're fully funding this target, we're fully funding everything we should be funding in the system. The next page is actually the table showing you the recommended rate adjustments. Again, we're going to look at the three key targets to help determine what that rate track should be. The, the column in the middle, operating income, the cash balance column. And of course, you don't hold debt on that last column in this table. We're recommending a 9.9% rate adjustment. That's mainly driven from a 12.8% rate increase from Great Lakes Water Authority. Basically, we want to ensure that we're passing that increased cost on, if we don't do it this year and we delay that increase, it's just a compounding effect. And the need for that increase doesn't go away. It just compounds. Because if we don't put the increase through this year that's being passed to us, we're most likely going to have an increase next year, maybe not to this level. We'll have an increase the next year, maybe not to this level. But you can assume you're going to have continued rate increases. So once we get behind in passing those rate increases forward, it just pushes that into the future and compounds. You can see that basically we're just talking tonight, I believe, about 2020. But I do put a projection of rate track in there to make the board and council aware that there, we should be looking at this every year. And most likely, all things given today that we know, you would need inflationary-type rate increases in the future. That inflationary-type rate increase is based on future projected Great Lakes Water Authority increases of 5%. So if next year you get another large rate increase, of course, those future rate increases can change. They can go up or down. But today, I'm recommending a 9.9% rate increase in water, and that's mainly driven from the increase you're seeing in your water costs. Are there any questions before I talk about the actual rate structure and how you're charging your customers? Because that's going to be an important discussion from, from the cost of service results last year and what you're actually charging your customers and your, your, your ratio between your fixed and variable costs. Are there any questions on the chart before I go on to your actual rate structure?
Yes, Madam Chair. I, I just, in, in, in defense of me, I tried to call Jerry today to ask some of these questions, and Jerry said to ask you tonight. So I, I did try to make some phone calls to Jerry before the meeting, and he told me to ask you. So at the top of this proposal is an increase, a small increase for the Great Lakes Water Authority for a retail water rate. Can you explain this 9.9 increase for water?
Yes.
I'm confused because.
I'm sorry, what table are you seeing is a small increase?
This is what Jerry asked for. It's an observation of the proposed increase from the Great Lakes Water Authority. The recommendation to the board is to increase the 2019-2020 retail water rate from 40.14 to 40.40 per MCF. That's not a 9.9% increase.
Correct.
But so, so your water, the average rate increase for water is, what is that rate?
Okay, great question. So let's move on to the rate structure. There's no questions on this specific table then, correct? Anyone else?
No, I was asking a question about the 9.9 that you just mentioned.
Okay, let's relate that though to what you're actually asking. What you're, I believe what you're actually asking is when you look at the specific rate design, I've recommended moving from 4.14 for the commodity rate to 4.40, which is not a 9% rate increase. So let's go to this slide here, which is the next slide in your packet after that table. And what that slide shows, that is the actual results of the 2018 Cost of Service Study, which tells you if you were charging your customers in the perfect world, what would we be charging our customers? And the table shows that you would actually be charging $34.99 a quarter for a 1-inch meter, and you would be charged, you would be charging $3.67 per commodity used. But what you're actually charging for your customers is on the next page. You're actually charging your customers $10.25 a quarter and $4.14 per commodity used. When we look at the Cost of Service Results, your, your 1-inch meter Cost of Service Results is about $34.99. On a monthly basis, let's just break this down monthly so we can think about this monthly. On a monthly basis, that's approximately $12 a month. Across the country, for a 1-inch meter in general, I would expect that charge to be between $12 and $17 a month. Right now, you're currently charging $10.25 a month. That's about $3.50 a month. Your fixed cost recovery of the system is, is very small. And, but let's talk about what that, what that actually recoups. Why do we have fixed cost recovery and why do we have variable recovery? You have fixed costs in the system that do not change regardless if a customer uses one drop of water or not. You've got the distribution system infrastructure sitting out there. You've got the meter. You've got the meter reader. You've got a customer service rep sitting there to answer questions. You've, you're going to send a bill. Even if a customer uses zero water, you're going to send out a zero bill. You have accounts payable, accounts receivable to process that. You can envision that you have all sorts of fixed costs that need to be recovered regardless if a customer uses one drop of water or not. What a Cost of Service Study does is it gives defendability on the customer charge that you're charging. A Cost of Service Study is a very detailed analysis. And this specific portion is something called a Minimum System Analysis. I look at your system. You've got all sorts of distribution infrastructure out there. And I'm trying to recoup, recoup the cost, what it costs to serve that customer. So I look at your system and I say, what is the minimum system from the distribution infrastructure that would need to be built to deliver one drop of water to each of your customers? So I look at that analysis and that portion of the distribution system goes into the customer charge. That's purely customer-related. Because I have a customer service sitting there, rep sitting there, because I have distribution system, the meter, all sorts of things. I need to recoup that cost. Now, the variable portion or the commodity portion recoups the other part of the distribution system. Because everybody uses more than one drop of water, I have to build out, instead of all 2-inch mains, I have to build out 6-inch, 8-inch, 12-inch, 10-inch, you know, whatever mains. So the rest of that rolls into the variable component. So to wrap all this up, there is a proper way to charge your customers. The proper industry standard is to charge a fixed cost by meter size to recoup the fixed costs of the system. Then there is the rest of the fixed costs, about, about 30 to 50% of the distribution cost recovery rolls into that customer charge. The rest rolls into the commodity rate. Because people use more than one drop of water, we consider that demand. And that rolls into the commodity portion. So to answer your question, your rate structure is currently very skewed between your fixed cost recovery and your variable cost recovery. So I've shown that through the Cost of Service Study, which again, that customer charge is based on a very methodical, I'll look at that customer charge, what it should be. And when we have rate increases in the future, I'm simply trying to write the, the balance between the fixed and the variable charge to properly cha, uh, charge your customers properly between fixed cost recovery and variable cost recovery. So when I didn't put very much on the commodity rate from 414 to 440, I'm trying to fix how you're currently charging your customers and push what you've pushed into the variable component back into fixed cost recovery. Several reasons for that. A, obviously, it stabilizes revenues. And B, it corrects any subsidies between meter sizes and rate classes.
Madam Chair, and, and I'd like to thank you, Dawn, because since I've been on this board, you're the first person who didn't blame it on the resident. You blamed it on something that has to be fixed in the way we've built them. I don't know, I think I have to process a little bit more. But since I've been on this board, it's always been because overwatering, overwatering, overwatering.
That's your, that's your water rate from Great Lakes Water Authority, which is totally different than your rate structure that you need to pass on to your customer. The cost of water on a wholesale ba, not a wholesale basis, but a whole, a retail, a cost of water to you, Great Lakes Water Authority has different pricing signals than you have for your customers. You, Great Lakes Water Authority delivers you water. You have certain pricing signals you give them. They charge you accordingly, appropriately, and fairly. Now, you need to take those costs along with your local distribution infrastructure and your fixed administration costs and charge that fairly to your customers. So there are two different, totally separate cost drivers, if you will.
Fairly is a good word.
So what I've proposed here, obviously, I'm trying to move your customer charge more appropriately to Cost to Serve, which means I'm trying to get it closer. Certainly, we're not going to get to $34.99 overnight. It's probably going to take three to five years to get there. We want to move very slowly. We don't want to cause, you know, rate shock from, from moving. Certainly, we're not going to move from the 10, 25 you're charging today to $34.99. That wouldn't be appropriate. But we do, now that we have the results of the Cost of Service Study, we do want to work towards that over time. We have a defendable document that we're working towards and we're, we're slowly getting there. So what I've proposed is to move from your current $10.25 1-inch meter to $16 a month and your commodity rate from $4.14 to 440. What that means to the average residential customer for a 1-inch meter using 15 CCUs a month is about $3.50 approximately per month or $9.65 a quarter. So the main thing to note tonight is I'm proposing a 9.9% rate increase in water, mainly driven by the increase in Great Lakes Water Authority. I'm using the opportunity of the 9.9% rate increase to move the components of your rates that you're charging your customers closer to cost of serving them. Do you guys have any questions on that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can we vote for anything less than 9.9 and keep our water running?
You can look at scenarios, but keep in mind that any rate increase that you don't push through today that's getting pushed on to you has a cumulative effect to the system in the long run. You're just compounding and kicking the problem down into the future, if you will. If you're having a hard time putting, what you're really doing today, you got a 13, or excuse me, a 12.8% rate increase from Great Lakes Water Authority. If you converted that to what it's actually costing you compared to your operating expenses, that's about a 12.4%, excuse me, 10.4% rate adjustment that should be put through. You're actually, I'm actually recommending a little something less than that. So you are absorbing a small portion of that increase that's already being pushed to you. I don't necessarily recommend absorbing more than that because again, the compounding effect of that pushes this into the future. If you're having a hard time pushing through a 9.9 today and you get another rate increase from Great Lakes Water Authority next year and that compounds, it's not going to make it easier next year to have a rate adjustment, I'm assuming.
In this agenda item, where does it say that there was a 12.8 increase from Great Lakes Water Authority?
It says it in your presentation on page 10.
Could it have been clear in the agenda item saying that Great Lakes Water Authority had? Because right here, what was recommended to us, what was recommended, it, it said, "An observation of the proposed increase from Great Lakes Water Authority. The recommendation to the Board of Trustees is to increase the 2019-20 retail water rate from 40.14 to 40.40." That was the recommendation of the agenda item?
I didn't write the agenda item. And I think what the agenda item, item came from was trying to give you what's actually, how it's going to actually impact your customers, which is the actual rate design, which I'm assuming that's what the public would be interested in, is their actual rate design and the structure that comes from the rate increase.
And do you remember how much we increased it last year?
I believe it was 2.9%.
And in the board packet last year, I, I tried to do some research and look at the board packet. It was presented quite differently from us. This year, I like that there's some planned increases year to year. I did not see last year where it was predicted in last year's board packet that I had to vote on too, that it was predicted that it was going to be 9.9 this year. It says 2.9 for the next five years.
Because if you recall, last year, the prediction was a 5% rate increase from Great Lake Water Authority. Great Lakes Water Authority, just like it is moving forward today. We didn't know that you were having a 9.9, or excuse me, a 12.8% rate increase from Great Lakes Water Authority. That is what prompted, one of the things that prompted a new study. So when you received the Great Lakes Water Authority letter that you're having a 12.8% increase instead of the forecasted 5%, I think staff did the prudent thing by updating the financial projection. In tandem with that, the capital improvement program changed. So the only prudent thing to do is to update a financial forecast with the best data we had at the time last year, update it with the best data we have at the time today. All I can tell you is that this five-year financial projection will be pretty darn close, all things being equal, the first year or two. But anytime you have a projection moving out two, three, four, or five years, things change. That's why it's prudent financial planning to keep this updated.
My last question, Madam Chair, and it's probably the most important question. I think residents need to know this. If we vote no, what happens to the township water flow?
I'm not an engineer, so I can't really say what would happen to the water flow. But alls I can tell you from a financial stability point is that you've stepped backwards in your financial position. Anytime you have an increase passed to you, it's prudent planning, financial planning, to pass that on to your customers. Your customers are rate payers. You're providing a service to them. The water utility is an enterprise fund that should be funding its own expenses, including its O and M expenses like water purchases and capital replacement. If you let any of those components go and, and not continue to keep up with your changing costs, you can envision that that's going to have a long-term effect on the financials for sure and, you know, most likely the water that's being provided. I'm not an engineer. I can't speak to what would happen.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I was going to ask some tough questions. I tried to get some questions answered today, and I was told to ask them tonight.
Great, thank you. Thank you, good questions.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Pantiflin, you might be the appropriate person to answer this question. So we've hit on the fact that we have an increase in our capital improvement plan. The reason for the increase is because we are preparing for infrastructure. And am I correct on that?
I, I did say change in capital. So it's actually a decrease in, in spending overall, over the two years for water and wastewater. So you've, the reason it should be updated is because last year, we had a different capital improvement program. This year, you have a, it's actually slightly decreased between also water and wastewater, both.
Okay.
Most of that has to do on the sanitary side. We, we've been able to, with the new model that we were, we created with the Saw Grant, we were able to finagle some, a little bit additional capacity in the system. So we're not having to spend as much money as we had originally projected. The, last year, the. The, last year, they had included a, selling a bond to finance a lot of this, these improvements along Twenty-three Mile Road associated with the road widening. We don't have to do that anymore. So they've had to go back and look at all that, not bonding, making sure that we've covered all of those costs, uh, as well as the, the cost of the system, not just the capital. But there was a significant decrease in the capital improvement cost on the sanitary side because of the Twenty-three Mile Road changes.
Dawn, is it, uh, could you possibly explain the benefits to not bonding?
Um, well, in general, I, 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 there's pros and cons, and there's an appropriate time to bond and appropriate night, time, um, not to. And, um, what I look at that helps guide me through deciding that are the three key targets, which is operating income, uh, operating cash balance, and the debt coverage ratio. One of the key targets that, having your capital improvement program decrease, I felt that, um, you had reserves, uh, to fall back on to help fund those capital improvements, but I would like to also state, when we get to the wastewater department, um, I've spent a majority of the cash down in this projection, um, in the wastewater department. So the board and council need to be aware that as things change in the future, you may need to bond in the future and/or you may need to change that rate adjustment. Um, but there was, there wasn't a specific pro to not bonding, other than your capital improvement program changed, and I felt that your cash balance, um, could help, uh, get you through the period of that, those capital improvements.
So our, one of our major objectives is to make sure that it's fully funded, our utilities are fully funded, and that's what we're, that's what this projection is setting us to keep up with that goal.
That's what we're working towards.
Okay. And one thing you said, just to make sure, nine percent is alarming, it can be, but when you broke it down into a dollar amount, if I'm right, you said it was three dollars and fifty cents a month?
Per month, correct. Or about, was nine dollars and sixty-five cents a quarter.
For water.
So I was just dividing that by three.
Okay. And that was for water?
Correct, for water.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just go here. Because our department takes the bills, and, um, we get a lot of comments from people that they're paying for Detroit's, people that aren't, aren't paying their bills in Detroit, and we should just get our water from someplace else, like Port Huron. Could you please explain that, Jim, please?
Certainly, there are other sources for water. Um, however, our system is designed currently to get water from the Great Lakes Water Authority. Any other place that we would get water from, we would have significant capital expenses to bring that water here. You know, originally, Macomb Township was hooked up to Mount Clemens. Mount Clemens would probably, um, love to have us as a customer, but we would have to make significant changes to our system in order to get that water from down there, uphill, up here, and into our distribution system. So i- 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 I'm not going to say it can't be done, but it, we would have to seriously look at the costs of, of how we're going to get it to, you know, they're, they're the closest, how we're going to get it here, how we build in system reliability, so if we have a water main break, do, where's our other source coming from? There's a lot that goes into, in, into finding a different source. And that's just going to somebody that's already got a treatment plant. You've got to build your own treatment plant, and you got a whole, uh, host of other issues.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before I move on to wastewater? Because I want to circle back to your debt, uh, your, your bonding and your, when I talk about wastewater, I want to talk about that debt coverage ratio. You guys need to be aware of that, so we can go ahead and slip, flip to the next slide here. Um, this, having a hard time just having to do one here. There we go. Um, this table is, uh, the table summarizing the financial situation of the wastewater department. Um, the first column, you can see, I don't have any rate adjustments in there, and I'm showing you that without any rate adjustments, operating income becomes negative, um, our cash balance is spending down significantly, um, and that's mainly due to the capital improvement program. But what I really want you to focus on in this slide is that last column, that debt coverage ratio column. What this is showing is that, um, debt coverage ratio, remember, is a, a, a measurement of debt affordability. It's how much cash am I flowing from operations in that year to make my debt service payment? So anything above a, a one, a one means I'm cash flowing enough from operations to pay my debt service payment one time. A one point two five means I've cash flowed enough to pay my debt service payment one point two five times. Anytime you see something under a one, like the second column down in this table, like a point eight seven, that means I've only cash flowed enough from operations in that year to pay my debt service payment point eight seven times, not even one time. Debt coverage ratio is not a measurement of how much cash I have on hand to pay my debt service payment, it's how much am I flowing from operations in that year? Can we afford the debt we have on the system? So you can see, one of the more concerning, uh, targets on this table is that debt coverage ratio. Without any rate adjustments, we're dipping below our debt coverage ratio. What does that mean? As long as we're making our bond payment, um, no one's going to come knocking on your door tomorrow. But if these are revenue bonds, you could technically, um, be in default if you were to keep this picture going like this. What happens is, in the future, when you go to issue bonds, um, you consider, you're considered higher risk, and you may have a, a larger, uh, re, uh, um, interest that, that you're charged on the bond. So it has long-term implications, not immediate implications, as long as you're paying your debt service payment. So one of the, um, things I want to do is make sure that that debt coverage ratio is healthy. So let's actually turn to a couple pages, because the next three pages are the key targets I've already covered underwater, and the methodology is the same. So let's go to the table recommending, um, I'm recommending a one point nine percent rate adjustment, um, for twenty twenty, and basically inflationary rate adjustments after that. What I'm trying to do here is you didn't have a significant increase from your wastewater, um, treatment provider, your wastewater treatment costs, so I'm not needing to pass on a large rate increase like I, like you got from Great Lakes Water Authority. So I'm trying to keep that at a minimum, but while, while also keeping the system targets healthy, mainly that last column, the debt coverage ratio. Well, the one point nine percent rate increase, it's just showing that your, your cat, projected to cash flow from operations enough to pay your debt service payment one point one time. Um, in general, if we have revenue bonds on the system, we want that to be a minimum of one, two, five. So when you look at the rate track that I've projected over the next five years, I've tried to keep them inflationary, while at the same time, um, we're spending down our cash quite significantly for that capital improvement program. I did not put a bond in this scenario, um, one, because I want that debt coverage ratio, um, to be healthier, and two, when these things change, both the expenses and the capital, you should be updating this every year, because the cash balance and the debt coverage ratio show that it could be possible, then three, three years or so, you would, might, may need to bond, or actually have a little bit larger rate increase. I didn't reflect that in the table, either of those in the table, because we need to let the capital improvement program play out, um, before we make those types of decisions. So in the wastewater department, I'm recommending a one point nine percent rate increase, um, and you have the same exact situation in wastewater on a rate design structure as you have in water. I'm trying to correct, um, pushing fixed cost recovery appropriately into that customer charge, um, so any increase, I'm going to try to push into that fixed cost recovery customer charge. Before you have any, uh, before I go on to the combined table, so you can see your financial, um, picture overall combined between water and sewer, how you're used to seeing it, a combined utility, do you have any questions singly on wastewater?
Anyone? No, please go on.
All right, let's go to the next slide. This is actually a financial picture combined. It's, um, the key targets that I'm looking at is that middle column, operating income, the next column to that, cash balance, and of course, your debt coverage ratio, uh, on that last column. Keep in mind here that this rate track is a minimum rate track. You can see that your operating income is actually dropping. I'm allowing that to happen with this rate track, um, because of the next column, which is the operating cash balance column. We're going to have to be careful in the future, um, both from the cash balance of this, of the system, and those rate increases, to make sure that we keep that ultimately, the operating income healthy, the cash balance healthy, and of course, that debt coverage ratio, um, in the last column there. So I'm just trying to give you a financial picture combined. Um, you can see that we're not quite meeting our operating income. It means technically, we're not fully funding everything we should be funding in the system, but I'm trying to balance that target with your cash balance and your debt coverage ratio. Do you guys have any questions on this combined picture? So real quickly, um, the, the next slide shows the twenty eighteen wastewater cost of service results. Again, um, you're charging, uh, yeah, cost of service, uh, shows you could, should be charging for a one-inch meter thirty-four ninety-nine a quarter. You're currently charging eleven sixty-five a quarter. I'm just, um, recommending you move from eleven sixty-five a quarter to fourteen dollars a quarter. The commodity rate would stay the same for the average, uh, customer with a one-inch meter, that's about a two dollar and thirty-five cent per quarter impact, or about seventy-five cents per month. Do, I know that was a long presentation. Do you guys have any questions on anything that I covered? I appreciate your, uh, questions and your time and your patience. Do you have any other questions on this?
Madam Chair, just one question.
Yes.
Uh, when you were doing most of your variable and, and your fixed cost, um, were you looking at the pipe in the ground to be fifty years, anything after fifty years? Are you taking any of that into consideration?
Um, what I actually do is I take your depreciation off your schedules, so, um, I, if, if it's a fifty-year depreciation you're using in your schedules, that's what I'm using, is a fifty-year depreciation.
Okay, and so when we're building our fund, we are also looking at, because we have some subs that have, that were created in seventy, and we're already pushing that fifty, fifty envelope, in that anything after that, we do have any type of a, a structured damage or something rather, that could be millions of dollars in order to fix that.
Correct. And as Jim, um, has, has already stated, um, the SAW grant had been pared way down, um, to, uh, basically try not to have a, a, uh, bond, um, and get by with the critical, I mean, I don't want to speak for Jim, but get by with the critical needs of the system on an infrastructure basis, but yet be able to, uh, fund that with the cash that we have, um, keeping rates minimal. I mean, you're very fortunate to be able to, um, fund the things that are, that are coming down the road for you, um, without significant rate increases, as proper planning.
True. And the other thing is, is that because we are building homes four hundred at least a year, five hundred a year, that really helps us a lot, too. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn, if I'm, I took your calculation, so what, at the end of the day, it, with water and sewage, it would be a four dollar and twenty-five cent a month increase to our customers.
Correct.
So when, when we, um, reviewed this, um, before, prior, we had discussed that this is potentially one of the cheapest utilities that we, as customers, would pay for, and I believe we used the example that we're, our customers are paying a dollar and one cent for a gallon of water and sewer, sewer service, if we calculate from our presentation earlier.
Well, actually, um, I, I, I can't recall that, but let me just put this in perspective. You're, you're going down a great road to put things in perspective. So for example, let's look at that commodity rate. Um, I believe that's a thousand gallon rate. If you take a gallon of milk, one gallon of milk, just envision that, um, I, where I live, I pay four dollars per gallon of milk. If you look at a thousand gallons, if you lined up a thousand gallons around this room, a thousand gallons of those milk, your customers pay four dollars and fourteen cents for a thousand gallons. So to put it in perspective, water, um, is reasonable, very reasonable. So it, I, is that kind of what you were alluding to?
Yeah, because we were comparing, you know, when Comcast increases their rate, rates, we as consumers have to pay the rate if we want Comcast. And so we had discussed in our whole, um, concept of utilities, actually what we're getting for clean water isn't that expensive.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, but on that note, you, you seemed to allude in explanations earlier that the reason it is cheaper is because there have some things we've done in the past that we're just now catching up to, okay?
I'm seeing water in general, in my opinion, only across the country, is undervalued and underpriced, in my opinion. That's why the infrastructure across the country is in the condition it's in, in my opinion.
Okay, thanks for that opinion, but earlier you said the reason that we're probably facing a nine point nine increase or plus a one point nine.
Was because of Great Lakes Water Authority water cost passed to you.
Right, but you also had said that there's some, the things we had done in the past that we needed to catch up to. I, I think those were, were your words. Do you foresee, because right now, I see increases, two point nine, 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 right? But then you said this nine point nine this year was kind of catching up to, to something we've done in the past. Do you think, do you think it's going to be two point nine next year?
I think that, um, maybe you're, um, I, I don't believe that I said the nine point nine was because of anything you're catching up on. I directly said, it's directly the result of the increase from Great Lakes Water Authority to you. What I believe that you're talking about is that I said in the past, the, uh, balance between fixed cost recovery and your actual rate structure compared to your variable costs is what needs to be corrected. That has nothing to do with the nine point nine and why you're getting a nine point nine. It's directly related to the increased cost to you. Now, the reason I didn't balance and put, I, I'm balancing back to the way, um, the cost of service showed, you should be charging your customers by putting a more aggressive rate increase on the fixed cost recovery compared to the variable component.
And I agree, water is important, too. I need it every day to exist. Do you see other communities facing this correction, too?
Yes, absolutely, across the country.
No, in our region, not across the country. Great Lakes Authority is who we keep talking about. In our region, do you see other communities making this correction?
Your, your cost structure, specific cost, cost structure doesn't have anything to do with Great Lakes Water Authority from the standpoint of the customer charge, um, that we're talking about.
So it's not just a Macomb Township correction?
No, it's not just a Macomb Township correction.
It's important, because this is, this is a big vote. It's a sensitive vote, and, and that's why I reached out to Jared today, and that's why I talked to you before the meeting, there's some, this is a very, very sensitive vote, and, and.
Well, it's important, let me give you just one quick example, too. It's also important, now that you have the data and a defendable document on how you actually should be charging your customers, let's just take a seasonal customer. You may not have a lot of seasonal customers, um, I'm not alluding to the fact that you do or anything, but I'm just trying to give you, to put this in perspective. So you're supposed to be charging for a one-inch meter thirty-four ninety-nine for a customer, whether they use one drop of water or not. Right now, you're charging ten dollars and twenty-five cents if you have a seasonal customer per quarter. If you have a seasonal customer that's leaving the system, that should be paying thirty-four ninety-nine a quarter, and they're paying ten twenty-five a quarter, who do you think is making up the difference for that seasonal customer?
What, what is that cost? That thirty-four ninety-nine, who, who is saying that's a suggested cost? So if nobody uses a dime of water, what's that thirty-four ninety? And again, the reason I'm asking this question is to educate the public, because they're, they're watching this, that's, that's why I'm asking questions.
They're great questions. So the thirty-four ninety-nine recoups the relative fixed costs in the system, such as the district, about thirty to fifty percent of the distribution system, the meter billing, the meter reader, whether they use one drop of water or not, the distribution infrastructure's sitting there, the meter's sitting there. You're not going to fire your customer service rep because somebody didn't use a drop of water, right? You've got fixed cost recovery there, you've got accounts payable, accounts receivable. Um, so there are fixed cost recovery that you need to recoup, whether the customers are using one drop of water or not. That is what the thirty-four ninety-nine recoups. And again, that's based on a very detailed analysis called a minimum system analysis. It's not just throwing darts on the wall to say, what should we be charging our customers? It's a defendable, you have a cost of service study with a defendable document that shows what that charge should be, based on a minimum system analysis.
So if a house, household didn't even use one drop of water, they're at least going to be, should be charged thirty-four ninety-nine a month. We're charging ten twenty-five.
Correct.
So a household, if they don't even use a drop of water, is going to be charged a hundred and twenty-something dollars a year?
If that's what ten dollars twenty-five is, yeah, times twelve, right, yes.
I'm a social studies teacher, not a math teacher.
They should be charged three hundred and fifty dollars, plus, well, that'd be, we gotta add another.
Okay.
Couple more on that, so.
All right, so homeowners should know that, that, that it, that's a fixed cost when they buy a house, whether they use water or not, they're at least going to be charged ten twenty-five, and we should be. they're at least gonna be charged ten twenty-five, and we should be charging thirty-four ninety-nine a month.
It's almost like saying if you don't use your car, you don't have to pay for it.
I get that, I'm catching up here. And so, other communities are catching up to similarities, similar ten twenty-five to thirty-four ninety-nine. They're starting to understand this, too, right?
Correct, other communities are moving towards increasing their fixed costs and following cost of service.
Madam Chair, if I may, Ms. Lund, are, are we in balance with the industry, industry standards for customer service charge?
In general, for a, uh, one-inch meter across the country, what I typically see is anywhere from about twelve dollars to seventeen dollars a month. You're currently charging, like I said before, about three-fifty for water.
And we have approximately twenty-nine thousand household water meters, so, all right.
Any other questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, on a recommendation of of the young lady here, and the Water Department, I'd like to, uh, increase the water rate, uh, to nine-point-nine percent rate increase for water, and then a one-point-nine percent increase for sanitary sewer. This is gonna be retroactive to July first, the beginning of the third quarter.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Madam Chair, just a correction, no offense, Roger, at all, on this one. Should that, should that, should we be going on the advice of Jerry Wangland, our department head, versus Dawn, or not?
I had said Jerry, too.
No, you, I thought you said Dawn, I'm sorry, I thought you said based on.
Dawn and Jerry.
I don't think, okay, okay.
Did someone support that?
I heard that, I went and chimed in.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the rates as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would just like to thank you for the expertise that you brought to this, the explanation you were able to give, and I think, as complicated as it was, I understood it, and I'm, I'm assuming everybody in the audience did, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We will move on, then, to unfinished business, and that would be the ethics ordinance. We have an update, which was proposed, postponed from August twenty-eighth meeting.
Madam Chair, Mr. Delio spoke to the, this during the comments, and everything he said is correct. We are this close, um, and I am going to be absent at the next board meeting, and I would like to vote on it, as I have put a lot of work into it. So I am proposing that, uh, it will be on the agenda on the October the twenty-fifth meeting.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Yeah.
October the twenty-third meeting.
Okay, so this is informational only?
Yeah.
Yes. Very well. Then we will go on to new business, and under the Planning Department, we have a request to approve the preliminary plan for Wolverine Estates North Site condominiums.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt you for a minute, and just refer to Mr. Sordi, did we need to make a motion on that, to postpone it to that actual date? Is that, and not informational only, I'm just wanna make sure we did that right?
No, 'cause you, as, as long as somebody puts it back on the agenda, back on, for the, for the, uh, October date, you should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
So should it be unfinished, I'm sorry, should it be unfinished business and next meeting, too? And then, post what, no, just, okay, okay.
I'm just gonna put it on the October twenty-third.
Mr. Van Tifflin, please.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. This preliminary plan has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, as well as all the department heads, and we are recommending approval by the Township Board. You happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Van Tifflin?
Hearing done, ma, hearing done, Madam Chair, I'll make a, a motion to approve the preliminary plan for Wolverine Estates North Site condominiums, located on the west side of Luckman Road, a half-mile north of Twenty-Five Mile Road, Section Five, permanent parcel zero five, zero eight, zero five, four, zero, 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 five.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the preliminary plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is also a preliminary plan. This is for River View Estates Site condominiums. Mr. Van Tifflin, again.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. Um, this site plan, or preliminary plan, has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, as well as all the departments, and we are all recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members?
Hearing none, I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary plan for River View Estates Site condominiums, located on the south side of Twenty-Four Mile Road, east of Romeo Plank Road, Section Seventeen, permanent parcel zero eight, one seven, two zero, one, zero, one, zero.
Support. Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the preliminary plan for River View Estates Site condominiums. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a request for a special event for the annual Fall Fun Fest at Denowith Gardens Center. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. Uh, Denowith Gardens is, uh, proposing to have their annual Fun Fest this year. Um, this is five consecutive weekends, starting, um, in, this weekend, um, through the end of October, uh, for a total of ten days, with essentially five days in between each of the events. The ordinance, um, right now, states that a special event can't last more than five days without board approval. So in this case, we're, we're asking for approval, or they're asking for approval from the Township Board, to run from September twenty-eighth, October thirty-first, uh, with the understanding that these will, uh, the actual events will happen on the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a, a motion to approve the annual season fall fun event at Denowith Garden Center.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
For five consecutive days.
Weekends.
Weekends. Weekends, I mean.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, thank you. Facilities and grounds has a request to award the contract for CDBG sidewalk ramp program. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, members of the board. I am here tonight to request the authorization to award the contract for the sidewalk ramp program to Great Lakes Contracting Services in the amount of one-hundred forty-one thousand, eight-hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This bid was placed on mitten, with two bids received. Great Lakes Contracting was the lowest qualified bidder. This project will include the removal and replacement of sidewalk ramps, curbs, and gutters at eleven intersections within Section Thirty. The new ramps will be ADA compliant when completed. The cost for this project will be shared between the Township and the Macomb County Community Development Block Grant. The amount, the CDBG funding available for this project is ninety-six thousand, two-hundred and seventy-six dollars, leaving the Township responsible for the remaining forty-five thousand, six-hundred and twenty-two dollars. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move on the, to award the sidewalk ramp program contract to Great Lakes, uh, Contracting Services in the amount of one-hundred and forty-one thousand, eight-hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to award the contract to Great Lakes Contracting Solutions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the supervisor's request to receive and file the correspondence announcing the appointment of the deputy supervisor. You received, uh, correspondence from me stating that, uh, all the new projects underway, as well as the upcoming census in which local government participation is being requested, is leading to appoint a deputy supervisor as, to assist in day-to-day operations. I am appointing Francesca Biondo as deputy supervisor, beginning Monday, September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Thank you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to the receive and file.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers.
Madam Chair, I just got a question, now that there's been a motion and support, and this should be open for discussion. You do not have to give a reason to appoint a deputy supervisor at all, under state statute, but you did. There's something in here that I'm concerned with, or I have a question about. Um, you, one of the things you said in the upcoming, one of the reasons you were appointing deputy supervisors, upcoming census in which local government participation is being requested. I'm a local government, um, control kind of guy, I, I guess, and I think most of us are up here. I have a family member that in the nineteen ninety census was a regional manager. I was a census numerator in two thousand. I don't ever remember any contact, except for local communities, to be kind of cheerleaders in the census to, to try to get your people responding. But you use that as a reason that we were going to hire a deputy supervisor. Is the federal government mandating things on us that requires us to, um, use hours of employees at the Township for? Usually, that goes through the clerk's office, too, Madam, um, Clerk Posey, have you received any word that the, the census is requiring duties out of this township? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because again, I worked for the census, had a family member that was a regional manager. Things might have changed since then. Is the federal government asking us to do something that is gonna require hours, taxpayer hours, on a local level? That would, again, you didn't have to offer a reason, but you did. I'm just trying to ask, is, is that something that descend, is the federal government telling us that you have to do some things that's gonna require?
No, but.
Okay, all right, okay, thanks.
Any other question? There was a motion.
And I supported.
And use, um, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, thank you. The next request is to pay the closing costs and facilitation fees for the Twenty-Six Mile Road property in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three-hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and fifteen thousand for facilitation. And I made sure that, uh, this was going to be reimbursed to us, and, uh, it's already built into the grant, that we will be reimbursed with our costs when we buy it back from, uh, Six Rivers. Are there any questions on this item?
Madam Chair, do we have an update as to where we are with the, um, grant? Do we have any?
Yes, we have amended the grant, as, as was approved at the last board meeting, and we have until October first to get all the paperwork back in, so. I'm working furiously on that right now. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we pay the closing cost of twenty-one thousand, three-hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and the facilitation fee of fifteen thousand for the road's property.
Support. Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to pay the fees as stated. All in favor signify by saying.
Madam Chair, can we get a roll call vote on that one?
Pardon?
Can we get a roll call vote on this one?
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Posey, no, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have water and sewer request, and this is to approve additional work for Country Club Drive sanitary sewer. Mr. Wangland.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn, and board members. Tonight, water and sewers in front of you, requesting for, for permission for an additional, uh, dollar amount, which I believe is a typo on our agenda. If you look in the memo provided, um, I think that dollar amount should be one-hundred thousand, twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. I just wanna clarify that, so everybody's aware of that.
Thank you.
And what we've got here, folks, is, um, everybody's well aware of the, the sanitary sewer issue on Country Club Drive. Back in, uh, January twenty-third of two thousand nineteen, Mr. Van Tifflin had a presentation that gave water and sewer and engineering the authority to go out and start survey work, start topo work, start, uh, design work on a relief sewer. So that, all that work has led to us, or led to us, to this point, with knowledge of that the gas main is in the way of where we wanna build our relief sewer. Thus, the need for tonight's request of asking for this increase of a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So, um, with that, I'm available, we are available to answer any questions, and we are recommending approval of this in, increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wangland?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move on, on the, uh, additional monies.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
If I may?
The corrected amount.
The corrected amount, thank you, thank you.
Indicate one-hundred thousand, twenty-five, just, point, sixty-two, just for record.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the additional work for the Country Club Drive sanitary sewer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The Engineering Department has a request to authorize the engineering consultant to design sanitary sewer trunk line around, along Romeo Plank, south of Twenty-Four Mile, to service the River View Estates Site condominiums. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. The, uh, this particular development, River View Estates, which was approved earlier tonight, does need a, a little bit of a trunk line, uh, sanitary sewer extension to provide, uh, the development with service. Um, this includes a sanitary pump station, um, that will be built on, on the actual property they've provided for it as part of their preliminary plan. So, um, in order to do that, um, it requires the Township Board to approve us to use. One of our consultants actually do the design work. What'll happen is we'll prepare an estimate for all that work, for them to get this through the permitting stage and ready for construction. The developer will be responsible for depositing all of the funds that are necessary to actually, uh, design and permit this particular project. So that, we'll, we'll not be expending any Township funds, it'll all be developer-funded. So with that, I'd recommend that we, uh, approve this and proceed with the design.
Any questions for Mr. Van Tifflin?
Hearing none, I make a motion to authorize engineering consultant to design sanitary sewer trunk line Romeo Plank Road, south of Twenty-Four Mile Road, to service River View Estates Site condominiums.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the, uh, engineering consultant to design the sanitary sewer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The next one is to approve a release of easement for municipal utilities for the enclave at Legacy Estates. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. Um, in this particular development, some redesign was done to the water main system with, within the, the boundaries of, of the property. This means that one of the easements that is in place is no longer necessary. So the appropriate release document has been prepared, and is before tonight to authorize the supervisor to sign the document and officially release the easement. We've reviewed it and are recommending approval.
Thank you, any questions?
Madam Chair, motion to approve release of easement for municipal utilities for enclave Legacy Estates.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve the release of the easement as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next one is a change order, number one, for the twenty-nineteen pathway gap closure program, and this is a decrease. We would like more of those. Mr. Van Tifflin, please.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. Yes, this, these are the types of change orders that we like. Um, this one, uh, is a reduction, it's essentially a balance of the quantities that were actually used, uh, in the field versus what was proposed. So this is a reduction in the contract of thirty thousand, six-hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents, has been reviewed by the engineer, in the Engineering Department, and we are recommending approval.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'm filing a recommendation of engineering, a decrease of thirty thousand, six-hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents for the twenty-nineteen pathway gap closure program.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Busino. Supported by Mr. Busno, to approve the change order for the pathway gap closure program. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a request to approve pay estimate number one for the 2019 pathway gap closure program. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. This is the first payment certificate for the project that we had the change order in the previous item. This is, the project is actually nearing, very, very near completion, so we are recommending approval of payment in the amount of $469,077.22 to the contractor. Be happy to answer any questions, but we're recommending approval.
Very well. Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move, or make a motion to approve pay estimate number one for the 2019 pathway gap closure program, in the amount of $469,077.22.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the pay estimate number one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next is the add-on from this evening, and the first one was the invoice for Mr. Lang. And Mr. Busno, you wanted to discuss this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I had the opportunity to actually go to your office and look at the invoice. I was hoping to be met by you, our general counsel, but I wasn't. The invoice was left for me. I did not see anything in that invoice that was attorney-client privilege at all, 100%. I don't know if anybody did. I'm not going to share what was on it, Tom, so we don't, I'm just saying, I don't see, based on statutory law, based on federal cases, based on state cases, what was attorney-client privilege. I'm going to vote to pay this bill tonight because I supported that investigation, 100%. What I am very concerned about is the precedent that's being set. I'm more worried about our residents. You know, when I get voted up here, we have fiduciary duty to the township, but we're not an exclusive club. I think when anything gets put attorney-client privilege on anything, it better be attorney-client privilege, and it better not just be a, I think there should be notice to any law firm that it should be attorney-client privilege, because what attorney-client privilege does, it may, it restricts our residents from FOIA request. That's what it does. And we're paying that bill with residents' money. Some of my money, I guess, you know, 20 cents or something, I guess, goes to it, but collectively, it is with residents' money. I don't see anything on there, anything I've read, okay? I may just be a lowly school teacher, but I do teach government and law in high school. That's what I do, and we look at these things, and I know how to look up precedents. I know how to look up case law. Case law precedents are not privy just to those in the attorney field. Any resident can look it up. I did not see anything on there. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm completely wrong, but I don't think I am in this case. I've been wrong before. There's been things that I fought for up here that sometimes I reflected on and goes, okay, maybe I should have looked at it. I didn't see anything on there that was attorney-client privilege, and again, it sets a bad precedent for the future, because our FOIA coordinator, people may not know this, whether it is in the clerk's office, me, or anybody that's afforded to, as soon as that attorney-client privilege gets put on there, they have to deny that FOIA request. And I don't think this request was, I don't think there was anything on there that the public couldn't see, based on everything I've researched. But I'm willing to pay the bill. I don't know if my colleagues look at the bill, and I did make an appointment at the office, and if someone disagrees with me, they could have made their case when I looked at the bill.
Anyone else?
Mr. Sordi, would you, could you explain the attorney-client privilege that was on that invoice, since it's unaddressed?
I spoke to Mr. Lang. This board hired Mr. Lang. I didn't hire Mr. Lang, this board did. I spoke to Mr. Lang because his original invoice came in marked attorney-client privilege, which, by the way, is a very common practice for attorneys that practice in the employment field when there's pending issues. The information contained in those bills, the strategies involved that can be derived from that information is subject to the attorney-client privilege. I didn't make the determination it was subject to attorney-client privilege. The attorney who prepared the bill, the invoicing, did.
Is it something we can redact in the future, or we would go under, obviously, we go under the guidance of your advice?
What I do with the attorneys that we hire, for instance, you get the invoices from Mr. Addis for the prosecutions. You get detailed bills from him. When you, when the board requested detailed bills from Mr. Addis, he and I had a discussion, and the bills he prepares are in a form such that there is no attorney-client privilege in it, but gives you enough information that you can read it. So in the fu, again, I didn't hire Mr. Lang, so, you know, I typically have that discussion with the attorneys that I hire, because I know that this board likes to see that information.
Madam Chair, the bill I looked at was in the exact same form that the Addis Law Firm bills us in, and there was nothing attorney-client privilege. And I'm not sure that the board hired Mr. Lang. I think there was three names provided to our supervisor. I think our supervisor hired Mr. Lang. I don't think the board did, and that's why I had an issue with the bill, but there's nothing on that bill that has attorney-client privilege, and I don't see it any different than Mr. Addis when he talks about Traffic Court, and he uses names in there. There was, there was nothing in there that was attorney-client privilege, and it shouldn't come to this, and I don't think a FOIA request should have been denied based on what that said, and now we have to deal with that, too.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, hearing no other discussion, I move to pay the bill as presented.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to pay the invoice as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. What was the other one?
Discussion with regards to hiring a headhunter for the planning director position.
Planning director. Mr. Sordi, you can explain the procedure that we went through trying to hire a.
I think Ms. Smith asked for it to be placed. I don't know if there's something particular you want me to address.
Madam Chair, if I might, when I received the, when I received the agenda. I'm very loud. When I received the agenda and we saw that we had a planner, I was pretty excited about it. I got to talk to Mr. Van Tiflin, I got to talk to Mr. Maher. I understood all of you were very happy with this person. I was very disappointed to see that, you know, when we found out it was taken off. So I was suggesting that we hire a hedge, hedge, I knew I was going to say that, a headhunter, that I believe Mr. Van Tiflin even spoke about last time, to get this going quicker, to get this moving. It's been since, what, I think April. You speak about talking internally. I'm obviously out of the loop because I'm not with you guys all the time. I wanted to move on that. Now you're saying that you're looking into getting a consultant. Is that someone that's going to do the same thing, or you're just going to have? I guess that's my question.
So what we did was, the, Mr. Van Tiflin and I, mostly because he's taken charge with handling the planning issues, and the supervisor have discussed, within the realm of that, when the, when the resumes started to come in and we were looking at who was there and what the likelihood was of getting an individual to fill that position as it currently exists with the township, we started to develop a plan, which is a picture I look at as, you know, like, like a puzzle that's complete. We were waiting, or at least I was, for what I wanted to present, to see what happened with the results of these interviews. As indicated, I think everybody was pretty pleased with the individual that we were proposing. That would have been a piece of the puzzle to finish the rest of the plan. That now being changed, we're going to look at filling that picture with a different piece of the puzzle. I've already talked to Mr. Van Tiflin tonight about meeting with him tomorrow to wrap that up. I'm not opposed to whatever the board would like to do. I agree with you. We need, I know the strain it's putting on.
It has to be taking a toll on everyone.
I fully understand. So we received four resumes. One individual, we offered an interview to the, all four of them. One of them declined to come, and I, I can tell you from there. I'm not opposed to a headhunter necessarily. I don't, I mean, this time, when we put it out, we extended the time period. We went out, we talked with Patrick, and we extended the scope of where we were advertising for the position. We broadened it, and we actually extended the period to leave it open. To give you an idea, one of the applicants that we had was from out of state and from North Carolina. So we're, I'm aware of the strains that it's putting on everybody. We should be able to put together a complete plan on how that's going to be addressed, and we've had some extensive discussions. I was hoping personally that this piece of the puzzle would fit, and it would make that plan work, but we, excuse me, we will rework it from there.
Okay, is part of the plan not having a planner anymore, and just having a consulting firm, a consulting firm?
I will tell you that part of the, part of the current plan is possibly having somebody not, maybe not at the same level of experience that we had with Mr. Maher, because that's what we were looking for last time, and I think that weeded some of it out. I think that based on what we got last time from some of the other ones, the pool will be much larger if we go beyond that, and then I'll be happy to talk to you, you know, about, we, I don't want to disclose anything up here that the board doesn't approve, because that's not my, that's not my role.
So if we, so getting a headhunter is not out of the picture? Can I make a motion for that?
Can I?
Yes, please.
I'd like to, Mr. Van Tiflin, I spoke with you, and I had asked if a headhunter, if you've used one in your previous experiences, and you had indicated that pre, a different employer, you did use a headhunter, and you were successful in doing that with a position of this caliber and the pay scale. It's not unusual to go that path. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, when I was in the private side, consulting side, yeah, sometimes you had to do that for your manager and above type position. You know, they're more rare, and in the quality, the caliber of the person that you're looking for, you know, you have to go sometimes and go and grab them, get their attention, because sometimes they're just not, they're not looking in the same places, you know, for a position. They're going to jump if they see a good opportunity to jump. Otherwise, they'll just stay where they're at.
So going off of what you said, Trustee Smith, is that it was suggested before, but we didn't go that path? So in order to get actual action, you're questioning if it has to be in form of a motion to actually have that happen?
Yes.
Okay.
I know there's organizations out there that serve as government headhunters. I don't have names off the top of my head, but I know they are organizations out there strictly for government purposes.
Correct. I would just like to say that I support that path if that, in our, we're becoming to a desperate search, and I would like to put it, no disrespect, I'm not fully trustworthy of the process for hiring in the screening to get people to the interviewing level. I'd like to put it in somebody else's hands at this point, when we are in the position that we are for this particular planning director. So I support, if you're going to make it in form of a motion, I will support it.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we direct our HR director, maybe with the help of Mr. Van Tiflin, to look into getting a headhunter for this position, a planner. I support it.
Motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Posey, to proceed with the employment search for planning director. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, prior to worrying everybody talking, I'd like, what I'd like to do is add to my previous, when I paid the bill for the particular lawyer, I want to make sure that it stays as a client privilege. Just want to make sure it stays as it was presented. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will move on to public comments. This is on agenda items.
Well, Madam Chair, he just, he just, when you said, "Thank you," does that mean that's going to happen? Because I don't think it is attorney-client privilege. I think that's a whole different discussion we have to have, whether that's attorney-client privilege. So I respect Mr. Krasinski's comments, and you said, "Thank you." Does that mean that it's going to stay attorney-client privilege? We didn't make it attorney-client privilege, that law firm did, and I think Mr. Sordi just admitted that. We never, this board never requested that that be attorney-client privilege, and there's nothing on that bill that says it should be. Nothing. Zero.
Madam Chair, if I may.
And if somebody had a different argument, Roger, they probably would have met me at the office when I read the bill to explain that to me.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to keep the bill as attorney-client privilege. That's my motion.
Keep it? We didn't, we didn't bill it. They billed it to us as attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Busno, I made a motion to keep the bill as attorney-client privilege.
Based on what? Have you looked at the, have you looked at the invoice? Did you go up to the office and look at the invoice like I did? Have you seen the invoice?
Yes, I have, Mr. Busno.
Took quite a time to answer that one.
Yes, I have. Make that in the form of a motion, leave it as attorney-client privilege. That's all.
I guess I don't know where we're going, so we can make motions from the board table for bills to make it attorney-client privilege. We can do that. We're going down a, we're going down a dangerous path here. We were told last meeting, when I said, "Should we vote to invoke attorney-client privilege?" Our general counsel said, "I would suggest not doing that." And now this is exactly what's being done.
Madam Chair, I don't know if to direct this to Mr. Sordi or to Ms. Posey. If someone FOIA's a request, a bill, who redacts that bill? If there's names on there that shouldn't be, that the public isn't allowed to see, we redact these bills if someone FOIA's a bill?
You want to answer?
If they're getting, I guess.
My suggestion would be, when you have an outside agency, like, when you have an outside law firm that has suggested it's turning client privilege, I would suggest that if, if you're going to produce it with redaction, we pull in the attorney, we sit down with the FOIA coordinator, I would like to be involved. I don't have to be involved with the attorney and find out what needs to be redacted. But based on my discussion with the attorney, he feels the entire bill is subject to the attorney-client privilege.
But didn't you say last meeting, we shouldn't be voting on attorney-client privilege up here? We shouldn't be voting, we as a board should not be voting to enact that. That's kind of what we're doing right now. I was told that last meeting, when I, when I asked the board, I said, "Let's vote to see if it's attorney-client privilege," and you said, "You shouldn't be doing that." Clearly, you interjected yourself, and you shouldn't be doing that. So now it's up to which trustee asked the question?
May I? Would you like me to comment?
Me? No.
And, Madam Chair, if I might, I wasn't talking directly on that bill itself, bills in general. That's all I wanted to know. Bills in general that are FOIA'd, we redact them prior to giving them, correct?
No.
Yes, I have.
It depends on the request and what department it's going to.
Okay.
If there's, if it's about with regards to an employee, per se, we would have human resources review it and make, ensure that we've redacted any information. Other information that gets redacted are addresses.
Right.
When we do the industrial facilities requests, there's private, personal information that gets redacted.
Self-security. I just wanted to make sure it was done the way, I mean, I do it a certain way at the county. I wanted to see if you guys did the same way at the township.
That's correct. We do have the option as the board, because we are the client, to make the determination if it remains attorney-client privilege, because we are the client. So if that's what Mr. Krasinski is attempting to do, he can do that in form of a motion.
But last meeting, I asked to do that. I said, "Can this board vote on if they thought this bill was attorney-client?" And our general counsel said, "I would not suggest that we do that." This board should, no, I'm just, no, I'm not yelling at you, Ms. Posey. You know that. I'm not yelling at you. What I'm saying is, last week, I pretty much asked the same exact thing, and I got an interjection that, "I don't think you guys should be voting at the table attorney-client privilege." And now on the same bill, the same exact thing, yes, you did, Tom, you can shake your head, let's go watch your video. You interjected yourself and said, "I don't think it's a good practice for this board to be voting if a bill is attorney-client privilege." attorney-client privilege. The same bill, same situation, now someone's saying, I think we should keep it that. I think we should have voted in the first place to see if it was attorney-client privilege. And before we take this vote, I would like to make sure that everybody on this board has seen the invoice. So, maybe we table this motion to make sure that everybody has seen this invoice.
Are you doing that in form of a motion?
You have a motion pending.
With no support, correct?
Right.
I'll support that motion. Motion by Mr. Krasinski, seconded by Ms. Goodhue, to retain the invoice as attorney-client privilege. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Trustee Busno?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Posey?
No.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Motion fails. Okay. Now, we can move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Please remember, there is a three-minute time limit. Page your name for the record.
Grace Caprucio. My address is on file. In November 2005, Chippewa Valley Schools approved two change orders under the heading Sequoia Land. Add sidewalk along 24 Mile Road per township. One change order paid by Chippewa Valley was for $3,725. The other was paid by the Macomb Intermediate School District for $2,775. In total, $6,500 was paid to the company highlighted in green. A FOIA request of this township shows no directive by the township for sidewalk installation on this 24-mile road, Sequoia Elementary School property. I can't seem to find any sidewalk where this change order describes it should have been. I see grass and a water-filled ditch. I'd like Clerk Posey to please investigate.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Parkinson. While I know this is non-agenda items, however, the conversation, the discussion came about after public comments on agenda items. So, I would like to discuss, because it was discussed at length, the increase in water rates was recommended, it was voted on, and it was approved. I don't have a problem with the increase, because obviously, we need it. And she, Ms. Dawn, she made a very good argument and with great data. My suggestion is to consider allowing the residents to add a second meter for irrigation. I know this has been discussed before, however, irrigation goes into the ground and not into the sewer. So, they're billing for irrigation as waste as well. It's my understanding. I don't know if that's estimated or not. And do we really have meter readers, or are they all electronic? Something else I'd like to have answered at one point or another. So, that would be, obviously, the second meter would be at the cost to the residents, and they'd have to pull permits and have a, you know, a licensed plumber install them. We all, we all aware of that. But I asked on a Facebook group what the residents were looking for, and that was one of the items they wanted, was the option to have a second meter for irrigation. So, if you're, as a board in the water department, if you guys consider that, that'd be great. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. We will move on to trustees' comments. Anyone?
I have no comment this evening.
Okay. Mr. Busno?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Krasinski?
No.
Okay. Treasurer's comments?
I'm happy to announce that most of our summer collections have been obtained. We have just not a very large amount left to collect, and all these will have penalties on them. I want to thank my staff. We were down one staff member during this busy time. And my two regular girls and my temporary person worked very hard to keep up and address the counter work, as well as the calls and everything else that we do. So, they work very hard, and I'm very proud of them. And they are very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's comments?
Thanks, Madam Supervisor. In an attempt to possibly answer the questions of the residents, Mr. Van Tiflin, could you answer the question on the meter readers?
The township does, they send somebody out in the field to read the meter, but they're not actually physically reading every meter. They have a device as they drive down the road. It gathers the information, it's a radio read. So, they drive down the street, they gather the information for all the meters that are along that street.
So, still an administrative cost to us?
I'd ask you to drive down my street, and I live on a dead end. I've got cameras. I'd get everybody to come down my street.
Madam Supervisor. Also, on the option for second meter, we've discussed that in length. That, that does, if we were to go that path as well, is an additional cost to, to the residents and/or the township as well?
Yeah. Really, what it does is it just changes the amount that people are paying. As a system, it actually costs us more money to have a second meter. And, and I can kind of explain it in that, you're, we mentioned that we have 29,000 customers, you know, you're going to have another, let's say, 20,000 or 24,000 meters that are put in the system, that all have to be read. Bills have to be generated. So, you're going to need additional personnel, additional vehicles and whatnot to actually facilitate that. Homeowner's going to have to have the second meter installed, and their plumbing changed in their house, which is, you know, could be $1,500, $1,000, $2,000, depending on their home and whether the basement's finished and whatnot. But it, I think everybody believes that they're being overcharged on the sanitary side. The way rates are set up is they, and Dawn alluded to this, is it's set up on what the revenue that requirement is for the system. So, we get a bill from Macomb County. We also have operational costs here at the township that we have to cover those costs. So, let's say everybody in the system installs a second meter, and their bill, all their bills go down. Let's say it's 20, let's say it's a good number, it's 20%. Well, the township still has the same amount that they have to generate. So, in order to make up that 20% that they've lost in revenue because of the second meter, we would have to adjust the sewer rate up to compensate for that. So, let's say the revenue cost is $10 million for the system for the year, and it goes down to eight. We would have to generate another, we still have a $10 million bill that we have to pay. So, we'd have to generate another $2 million somehow, and that would be in the form of a rate increase. So, really, what you're doing by having a second meter is you're changing what individual customers are paying. So, your low-end customers that aren't using as much water would end up paying much more to cover that cost, because they have additional sewer rate that they're paying. Your higher-end users are probably paying a little bit less. So, you're just changing around, but everybody across the board is, is going to go up.
Okay. Just an attempt to try and answer some of the questions. Also, we had our Fall Fun Fest this Saturday, this past Saturday. I just want to say another great, successful event for the township. I believe there was over 2,000 residents in attendance. A great collaborated effort by grounds and facilities. We had the fire department out there and all of the parks and recreation staff working. It was actually a summer fest, because it was probably 90 degrees that day, very hot. But it was successful overall, and it was great to see all the community out there. And I just wanted to give an update on our letter that we sent out to our registered voters in Macomb Township, encouraging them to use the mail-in voting process. And we have, in approximately one week, received over 1,000 people have responded. Very excited to be added to our list to vote by mail. So, we are really happy with the turnout from that mailing, and we are encouraging more people to respond. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Under Supervisor's comments, I have an appointment to make, and that is the Act 345 Pension Board. One application was submitted. The applicant has lived in the township for 17 years. He has previously served on the Fire Staffing Committee. He was the chairperson of the Harper Woods Employees Retirement System Board for 17 years, a certified police officer, and a certified firefighter. His, excuse me, a second here, his resume gives a lot more qualifications, but anybody that wants to look at it is welcome to. His name is James R. Burke, and at this time, I would like to appoint him as a member of the Act 345 Pension Board.
Madam Chair, under your recommendation, I approve, I make a motion to approve Mr. Burke.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to appoint Mr. Burke to the Act 345 Pension Board. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to correct you. I believe Ms. Nevers seconded before me.
I didn't say it loud enough. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
As serving on the Act 345 Board, and I also served with Mr. Burke on the pension board with the firemen, I think he is a great addition to our Act 345 Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I have is the free paper shredding and electronics recycling event. It is on October the 5th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it will be held here, because the fire department site on 23 Mile Road is chaos. That's all I can think of. We will be meeting with a representative from GFL tomorrow to try and work out a plan to get people in and out as quickly as possible. The other thing is that the fire department will be holding open house on Sunday, October 6th, which is the day after the recycling event. And that will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's going to be at Station 3, which is on North Avenue, just north of 21 Mile Road. There will be live demos, station tours, engine tours, kids' activities, food, and fun for everyone. I hope to see a big crowd out there. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
By Ms. Posey, supported by Mr. Krasinski, to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and we are adjourned.